Hey Chris.
Hey, how's it going?
Good, how are you?
Doing alright, how about yourself?
I'm fine.
Good.
Managed the snow alright today?
Yeah, yeah, from home today instead of driving into the office. I prefer to work from the, uh, from the office, so.
How are you everyone?
Hi Chip. Hi Catherine.
Hello.
Nice to meet you or, uh, to see you. Hi Scott, how are you?
Good Mike, how are you this evening?
Pretty good. Just wait for our chair should be arriving shortly and we'll be able to get started.
You guys gotten all dug out from under all this snow?
Yeah.
Just about, yeah.
It's been a project.
Yeah. Hi Jamie.
I'm gonna go ahead and rename myself here because it's not my kid's music class.
We can give Phil a few more minutes. I'll see if I can reach him, uh, by phone. Well, I sent Phil an email, um, and Dustin, our vice chair, um, was recently appointed to the planning commission and will no longer be serving, so, anyone would like to assume, uh, the vice chair position. Chris, I believe you're currently our most senior member on the board, um, unless anyone else would like to volunteer.
I mean, I guess I can run us through it. I've never done it before.
As a brand new person, I think I'll stand back a little longer.
Fair enough.
Alright, well, the, um, it's, uh, it's, it's fairly straightforward, Chris. If you're, if you're comfortable with that, I can give you pointers the best I can.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get, uh, everything open here. Sure, alright. So we do the, uh, call to order, correct?
Yes.
It's, uh, 7:06. And then do I do the roll call or do you do the roll call?
Um, no, I will do the roll call and, uh, so everyone's aware, um, under the current, um, Open Meetings Act for virtual meetings, everyone needs to, state their name and the county and state if applicable where they're joining the meeting from. So, uh, oh, and I'd also take this moment to introduce Ms. Catherine Becker. She is the board's new member. Um, as, uh, many of you know, Dustin has been appointed to the planning commission and so Catherine will be joining us. So, um, I'll start the roll. Becker?
Uh, I'm, I'm in Washtenaw County, Michigan.
Okay, Phil?
I'm here from city of Dexter.
Wallaker?
Uh, here, uh, city of Dexter, county of Washtenaw.
And Griffin?
Here, calling in from city of Dexter and Washtenaw County.
Okay.
I'm in the city of Dexter as well, but you asked about the county.
Oh, that, that's okay, yeah.
Alright, move all the minutes. Did anyone see any issues?
I did not.
Does anyone move to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve.
A second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Alright.
The, uh, other, other boards and commissions have been doing a roll call vote, so I'll, I'll, for you, like minutes approval, I'll, I'll, so I'll do that really quickly. Uh, Hill?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Wallaker?
Yes.
Alright, motion passes.
Alright, I'll leave the staff report up to you.
Okay, oh, the next item's the approval of the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry, I jumped. Alright, um, well, let's move on to the approval of the agenda.
I'm moved to approve.
A second, just chat.
Uh, Griffin?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
And Wallaker?
Yes. Alright, now I'll leave the staff report up to you.
Alright, so, uh, the Michelle staff report, uh, for the most recent council meetings included in the meeting packet. Um, does anyone have any questions on the report?
No.
Alright. I don't have any additional updates, so, um, can move right along.
Alright, um, does anyone have a conflict of interest?
No. No.
Alright, well, let's move on to the public hearing portion. Uh, let's see here, sorry, trying to find, uh, our case number. It is, uh, AP 2020 point two one dash zero nine ZBA, uh, three two seven four Eastwood, East Ridge Drive. Public hearing to consider a request for a ten foot variance from the forty foot minimum front yard setback required by the R1A residential cluster development standards for Rester, Westridge cul-de-sac properties as shown on the approved final site plan. Do I need to continue to reading the roster? Is that enough?
Nope, that's, that'll do it.
Okay.
And so as the board recalls, uh, the board first held a hearing for this request at their December regular meeting. Um, at the time, the applicant, Mr. Westfall, was requesting a five-foot variance from the required forty-foot front yard setback in order to construct a single-family dwelling with an attached beard deck and preserve a mature tree located on the property. The tree is a shag bar kikri, which is a native Michigan species, and the trunk, um, the diameter of the trunk is identified as thirty-four inches on the survey provided by the applicant. After holding a public hearing, the board, uh, the board voted to postpone action on the request to allow the applicant time to have the tree's health and condition evaluated by a certified arborist to evaluate the potential impact of the proposed construction on the tree's health and to correct the site plan to clarify that the proposed dwelling would be a single-story, a ranch-style dwelling instead of a two-story. These are necessary because, uh, after discussion, um, there, the, the focus of the discussion was that the basis for the variance is being able to preserve the tree and confirming that the tree is in, in good health. The tree wasn't in good health and that the need for a variance could be moved. Um, so to address the items above, uh, the applicants provided a letter by a charverus stating that the tree is in, uh, good health and condition and that it could feasibly survive construction. They also included some recommendations to protect the tree, um, during, uh, construction and, uh, and to ensure its health. The applicants also provided a revised site plan. Um, one of the arborist's recommendations is to include a permeable surface under the deck. The site plan, um, identifies that the entire surface under the deck instead of a concrete pad will be permeable. The, uh, the applicant's also requested to modify his request, um, from the five-foot variance to a ten-foot variance back requirement. So being that it was a larger, uh, variance, a new public hearing notice was published according to the requirements in section twenty-two oh eight of the zoning ordinance. So when considering a variance, the criteria to evaluate a request are established in section twenty-four oh six A, something ordinance. The board needs to, um, apply the criteria to this specific case and in order to grant a variance, the board will need to find that all of the criteria have been met. So the first criterion is a practical difficulty, um, and in the context of this request, uh, the board would need to find that strict, uh, application of a front yard setback requirement prohibits the applicant from building a permissible structure. In this case, one that is up to the, uh, permissible lot coverage and preser- and from preserving a healthy and mature tree. So, uh, as requested by the board, the applicant has demonstrated that the tree is in fact, um, healthy and could survive the proposed construction, um, as stated by, uh, by the arborists. The tree as a healthy native Michigan species exceeding twenty-four inches in diameter would be considered a landmark tree, uh, under the zoning ordinance. However, um, in evaluating the crest, the, the board will need to make findings in terms of these, um, to determine whether the substantial justice criterion is met. Again, while the variance may help the applicant preserve a healthy landmark tree, it would also, the board would also have to find that it is unnecessarily burdensome to construct a dwelling to the maximum allowable footprint, within, within the property, within, within the building envelope, or that a lesser variance would not provide relief. So the, the topology of the, the property is fairly flat. There are no apparent natural features that would, um, necessitate citing the dwelling specifically where it's proposed. Um, there is some additional room between the dwelling and, uh, between the tree and the front lot line. However, due to the wedge shape of the property, that does limit configuration options, so, um, if the board feels that the applicant sufficiently demonstrated that site, that, uh, an alternate layout of the dwelling, um, without, uh, that would preserve the tree without a variance or with a lesser variance is adequate, the standard could be met. But that'll be something that, uh, the board will need to deliberate. Um, for the third criterion, granting requested variance would be consistent with the Westridge cul-de-sac building envelope requirements. Notably, that it would allow the applicant to maintain the intended side yard setback. It would also be consistent with the tree's preservation standard. The fourth criteria requires that the circumstances leading to their request is an extraordinary one. Um, natural features of, of a property and the way the product, uh, property's boundaries are established are two things that generally speaking do qualify as an extraordinary circumstance. Preserving a tree and natural feature of the property would qualify. Um, however, the need for the variance also can't be self-created and so again, the board would need to determine that, um, alternate citing of options are infeasible or unnecessarily burdensome for the standard to be met. Um, staff does not believe that granting the requested variance would be a hazard to nuisance. And lastly, um, the request would be consistent with adjacent land uses, um, and at the board's December meeting, the board heard favorable comments from adjacent property owners. There are recommended conditions of approval. Um, staff, uh, forwarded the, uh, updated application documents to the city's planning consultants who provided a feedback letter. It was a typo in that letter, but the, uh, the recommendations, uh, remain the same. Um, the first condition of approval is that essentially the applicant would be required to implement all the recommendations of the arborist. The second condition is that the site plan would need to be revised, um, to address the lot coverage. The, the proposed, the structure as shown slightly exceeds the permissible lot coverage. I believe this is because the front porch, um, isn't included in the calculation, so, um, this stipulation would just, um, clarify or, or make the distinction that the variance is not for the coverage requirement and that would need to be revised, but I, I believe the overages is around seventy-five square feet, uh, the roughly the area of the front porch. The next two conditions are that the, um, city's, uh, tree preservation replacement standards be implemented. Again, the, um, the basis is for, of the variance would be in part to preserve a landmark tree and so a condition of approval would ensure that, um, a performance guaranteed deposit is made and that, um, if the tree, uh, after an evaluation by the city, um, is in failing health, that it would need to be replaced. So does anyone have any questions about the staff report?
So if he has to replace the tree, what does he have to replace it with? I mean, he's obviously not gonna plant a, a thirty-four inch tree.
I believe, uh, so for landmark trees, I believe it is five, um, five trees, I would need to check if there's a specific, uh, species designation, but the ordinance requirement, uh, sorry.
Half inches and I don't think there's a species.
Okay. Um, it, it would need to be replaced with, uh, a number of other trees according to the size. Small, uh, in, in the event, um, smaller, younger trees need to be replaced, super trees need to be planted to replace.
I have a question, Mike, about, um, the lot coverage that you mentioned, is it slightly being greater than what's allowed? So, uh, does that mean that they would need to come back with a site plan with a smaller, with a front porch that's smaller by a certain square footage? And or they would need to come back with a separate re- or, or they would need to come back with a separate variance request to exceed the, to exceed the maximum allowable lot coverage or something else?
Uh, so I, it, it, it would depend on the, uh, the applicant wanting to proceed. I think, um, this consideration alone is just for the front yard setback variance. This would, if this were approved during the permit process, um, Mr. Westfall would need to submit a, a new application that shows some modification of his proposed layout, so the structure meets the lot coverage requirement. Um, he could apply for another variance to exceed it if he were interested in doing so, but I, I think that would be, um, a much more challenging request, but he is.
Okay, but it's something that would be dealt with, but later on down the line that it like, we're not tacitly improving it or tacitly approving it at this point.
Right, si- since, and this is, um, I, I assume that the site plan's a little preliminary. Um, so this is a, a thing that this, the condition would just make it explicit that the variance is explicitly for the front yard setback and not for deviation from coverage.
Okay, thank you.
Mike, I have a number of questions and comments. Is now the time to raise those or?
Um, if, uh, there are questions for me, otherwise, uh, they'll have the opportunity to direct them to the applicant.
Will you tell me?
Um, uh, we can start with me.
Okay. One question in, um, as far as process goes, procedure, if we approve this, um, variance request, what's the next step? Is it simply you by that, I mean, uh, the city reviewing and approving the plan or does it come back once it's more formalized? Does it come back to Planning Commission for their review?
Um, new single-family dwellings are reviewed administratively by staff, so after, if the variance were granted, then the, um, applicant would need to submit, uh, a permit application to, to build the dwelling and, um, staff would review it, um, with the, uh, the, applying the sta- the, the, the deviation from the front yard setback granted under the variance.
Gotcha, that's what I rather thought in, in my, so at least one of my comments is this general site plan review and that is the current configuration basically paves the whole front yard. It looks to me like it must be a three-car garage. And I would think that all by itself, that's, that, that's not the best fit for the neighborhood. But beyond that, relative to the tree, Mr. Westfall has, um, I fully appreciate Mr. Westfall's, Mr. Westfall's, um, process relative to the design of this building. In other words, we've done the same thing in the past and that is you work through a plan with your wife or wh- whomever and you come up with a plan that you like. It really works for you. And then you put it on the, um, uh, on the, uh, site plan and, um, so changing that plan is a, um, is uncomfortable because you gotta go back and say, oh geez, now we gotta start over or whatever. My point in saying that is, he's gonna die the way it is right now, uh, within two to five years after you, um, build your house and I'll explain why, how I came up with that. And understand, this is kind of my field of expertise. The, um, the house sits six feet higher than the, then the finished floor of that house is six point three feet higher than the elevation at the base of that tree. So one problem is, how do you make up that difference? The only way you can really do that unless you build a big retaining wall, unless your house itself is, acts as a retaining wall, um, is to fill out into the area where the tree is. By, if you figure a three-to-one slope, there's another eighteen feet away from the house just for that fill. Another question here and a comment is that the dimensions shown, by the way, the arborist's letter is slightly incorrect as well. It's, uh, if I can find it here. There's a dimension to the, excuse me, there's a dimension to seventeen point five feet between the house and the corner of the deck. It's actually from the house to the corner of, or from the tree to the corner of the house. It's, um, whatever it is, it's, uh, less than that, of course, to the, to the deck. The, um, with the, if you're building a house, there is no possible way, the deck, you can do this, but if you're building a house, there's no possible way to build a foundation for a house without further infringing upon the area of the foundation. And I figure at a minimum, you're gonna need an extra five feet that's gonna be disturbed on that side of the house, which further reduces the, um, um, the amount of, uh, roots that are saved. The, um, by my calculations, twenty-three percent of the root zone will be lost by the house itself with that extra excavation. And twenty-nine percent of the root zone will be lost when you throw in the, um, when you throw in the deck as well. And the way porous pavement works, porous pavements work is you, I'd expect that would be hand-dug anyway, but you gotta dig deep. In other words, we're not in sand soils and if you don't put in a proper sand base, they don't work at all. So if you figure another two to three, not two, three, one to two feet of excavation for that area in addition, that's also removing more surface roots. The, um, so that amount of disturbance plus the fact that the arborist says if you, to the drip line of the tree, which is, what is it, thirty-four feet, uh, radius? If you, what they, what he has said is, if reasonable and feasible, he doesn't want, you, you shouldn't get into that area and I think it shouldn't say that at all because I know it's unreasonable to try to build your house without getting into that area. Any contractor is gonna feel the same way and will argue that I can't build this house unless I drive equipment within that zone. So I think, um, that's a loose statement. I'm gonna show you something real quick. I did this real quickly to, um, to show that, that, um, area of the drip line, the thirty, whatever it is, thirty-four foot radius. And you can see the impact that it has. Um, move it and that's moving the house ten feet further into the, right away. I think, um, so in summary, I, I've dealt with these sorts of issues for forty years. I don't think that tree's gonna make it and it needs to make it. It wants to make it for everything that you, Mr. Westfall, want. You, you, you're trying to do this, so you save that tree, but the house you're plumping, you're, you're, um, putting down is, is simply going to, the tree's gonna die. I think the house could be reconfigured to make it much better in that regard. And I see you shaking your head, but I know exactly what you're, what you're, why you're shaking your head is you guys have gone through this and you've figured out this is the way you want it. So the bottom line is this tree wants to be saved. It's not gonna be saved. If in fact you go forward with it in this plan, you're gonna be cutting down that tree in two to, two to five years anyway. You might as well move the, the house back right now, get rid of the tree and free up some of your front yard and, um, and and make it fit the site. Uh, and that, I do, I wouldn't favor that because I think that tree's a wonderful tree, but it's just, it's just not gonna, it's just not gonna make it. I can show you examples, nearby examples of the same sort of thing and exactly what's happened, uh, if you're interested, but, um, as again, based on my expertise, it's just not, it, it, what you're doing is not gonna save that tree as much as you would like to. It's, it's not gonna happen. Anyway, those are my comments and.
All right, well, I can I can add some some information relevant to some of those comments, chat some I think would be better directed to the applicant, but the the recommended conditions of approval would require a minimum of nine feet, a minimum nine foot buffer between the tree, all the way around the tree, which would leave roughly seven feet for uh, construction activity. I know there's recommended ranges of minimum buffers for construction activity, but that could be a question for the applicant is will that be? Does he is he or his contractors, I believe some of whom are with us tonight, will be able to maintain that will be adequate.
Excuse me, where does nine feet come from? I'm sorry for interrupting, Mike.
So the the recommended condition was that the buffer be maintained at the drip line, except for between the tree and the house with the minute then that the buffer would be able to be reduced from the drip line to a minimum of nine feet, essentially up to the corner of the deck, which would mean the the deck would need to be hand dug. But it would still potentially leave some room around the foundation. Based on the setback identified on the site plan, it's roughly seven feet. If if there was a nine foot fence between the house and the tree.
So was that an ordinance thing or is that a recommendation from staff?
Oh, that's that was a recommendation. It's a I think fairly standard to have a buffer at the drip line of a tree. That was the that specific recommendation was based both on the arborist letter and then Carlisle Wortman's evaluation of the arborist letter.
Of course, again, the drip line has nothing to do with nine feet, but
Right.
I pretty much told you how I.
Okay. Um, well, I so I I came up with a similar calculation that the um the foundation and rear deck would overlap roughly a third of the root area. The adjustment would move the rear deck out of the range of what I understand to be the critical root area of the tree. Roughly ten to fifteen feet of the from the trunk where root damage could have a more significant impact on the tree's health. Those are, those are my comments. And again, I think Scott, I believe in a moment will have the opportunity to present in his new information and perhaps respond to your questions, too.
Okay.
All right, well, let's move on to the petitioner's presentation then.
Okay, Mike, are you ready for me?
Sure.
Okay, well, thanks for coming out tonight, everybody. See a lot of familiar names and faces. I also do have our contractor. He's on the far right on my screen. His name is Nick. Jason Lawrence is one of the two certified arborists that came out and inspected the tree and the lot. And I also see Peter Barr and Tom Arbuthnot, two of my neighbors. Certainly, I I can run through the entire thing again, but I think everybody on the committee's been pretty well informed. Just responding to Chet's concerns about the tree is going to die. Chad, I believe it was actually your idea two months ago to go from five to ten feet. Certainly, you know, we wanted to respect what your concerns were at the time. So you you asked that we get certified arborists out to inspect the health of the tree and the drips drip system, and I didn't get one. I actually got two certified arborists and again, certainly wanted to respect the request that you made there. I I certainly do not know Chet as much about trees as you do. However, both the certified arborists that I've I've talked to, they seem to be very knowledgeable. They seem to be, again, certified by the state of Michigan. As far as porous pavers, my my understanding was that was just gonna be simply a pervious surface, something that water could get through very easily. And again, I do have our contractor in the line. His name's Nick, a very helpful guy. You know, really, as as far as Chet's request to reconfigure the house, you know, that's as I explained last time, we've we've already overspent on our architectural fees and we're we're just not at a point where that's gonna be feasible for us. I I do have to rely on what the word of both certified arborists were that if we push this five feet closer to the street that this tree is going to be saved. And after talking with our contractor, he's very adamant that they can put up a very reasonable sized fence and keep any heavy equipment and people even from walking in that area just to again preserve the root system, save it and so forth. So again, I I certainly do not want to pretend to be as knowledgeable as as Chet is on this. But I I do believe that both certified arborists are about as good as they get when it comes to having knowledge of trees and what we need to do to get this job done. And Chad, we're certainly on the same page as far as wanting to build a nice house, not change too many more plans. I I don't think my wife is at a point where she wants to listen to any more changes to the plans. But I I do believe after talking to these experts that this tree is gonna be salvageable and it's it's gonna flourish for not just two to five years, but many more decades.
Do we have any questions for the petitioner?
I have one one comment, more of a comment or maybe a request. So we moved here, I don't know, three and a half years ago, Route and Dexter Crossing, opposite side of town. I had a new construction going next to us that I think really was using its lot coverage. So when you look down our the side yards, you might assume we each have half of the side yard, but we don't. We have more like two thirds, one third. And the only thing I would, and I'm sure you would, and the contractor would pay attention to the wear and tear on the neighbor's lots as you are having machinery go back and forth. Because it is something that over the past couple of years, I I think, I don't know if it's ordinance or law, I'm not sure, but I think the obligation is on the contractor and or the homeowner to make any repairs to the neighbor's yard. So just looking at the width that you have there, I can anticipate different, you know, skid steer or something is rolling there tearing up grass. So my personal experience, I would just say watch out for that.
I don't know if you want me to respond to that or not, but I hope that we don't even go on the neighbor's property and I'd be fearful that if we even left one tire track that we probably re-saw that portion of the lawn because you know, we have to be neighbors for a long time and, you know, our kids are gonna be playing together. So the last thing we want to do is be a nuisance before we've moved into the house.
Right, right. And we we get along fine with our neighbors. I and you know, it's something they felt bad about at different times. It's just you know, one thing that maybe they didn't realize, or maybe even their contractors don't realize when they come to do work on the property, they might just assume, oh, halfway between is what we're allowed to use, but it's not.
Yeah.
And I can add real quick, Jamie, that there um there is a performance bond requirement for all new builds in the city, which does include a deposit to repair any landscape damages.
Yeah, and I think that was.
And they that worked. They put up a silt fence at the edge of the property anyway, so it's obvious where the property boundaries are when they're building.
Yeah, yeah, there were times where that wasn't the case here.
I do have a question of the contractor. Or you, Mr. Westfall, whoever's best able to answer, and that is that six six and a half foot grade differential between the finished floor and the base of that tree. Have you given any thought to how you're gonna accommodate that? The I would guess that the deck is at the same elevation as the finished floor of the house, the surface of that deck. And therefore, that in that whatever it is there, seven some feet, you've got to get the grade down to the base of that tree. And basically, you're gonna bury another, well, like I said, eighteen feet if you go a three to one slope, unless you build a retaining wall around there.
Well, the deck isn't the deck up on posts. It's gonna, it's not gonna be right at the ground level.
That is. I mean, one way to handle that is to make it a raised deck, raised deck.
Pardon me? Hey, Chad, if I could chime in?
Yeah.
Can you guys hear me? This is this is Nick. I'm the contractor.
Yeah.
I I think you might be reading this wrong. We are not gonna do a walkout. I think you're thinking that the basement floor is where we walk out. If you look on Lisa's drawing, I
No, no.
It talks about the top of the rear wall.
I'm assuming that the finished floor of the house is at the same elevation as the deck, which is a porous, which is constructed of porous pavement. Right? But that leaves it.
No, the rear deck, the rear deck is just a wood deck. Can you guys hear me? Okay, it's just a wooden deck.
Well, then I don't understand at all. That's isn't that the porous pavement area? Oh, is that porous pavement underneath the raised deck?
Yeah, yes, yes. That is just like a weed barrier. It it in the in the finished, the the back rear wall is at eight fifty-two. And in the tree currently is at one fifty-one and a half. So I mean, we're only six inches off from the grade. So we're not, there's not a big variance in we set the house this way so that we don't have to disturb all the land around, correct, Scott?
Oh, that is correct, Nick. Yes.
The finished floor of the house is is um
Oh, I see. It's labeled, it's labeled in the box, in the white box center of the house.
Eight sixty. And the deck in this elevation at the base of that tree is four nineties or eight fifty-three, seven. So that's what I'm coming up with. Where am I?
No, the deck is not at ground level. The deck is at the floor level of the house, and so they'll have to have a railing around it because they only are allowed to be eighteen inches above the grade if they don't have a railing. But they're not saying they're not planning to have a railing.
No, there's no, actually, there's no mention of the deck per se, although I understand that proposed deck. Oh, I got you. I'm sorry, reading that note. Proposed deck with permeable paper service below, but the concern is still saying in regards to the permeable pavement relative to root damage. But what are you? Okay, then that's not as much of an issue because I presume what's gonna happen here is the back of the house, the foundation, six feet of the foundation of the back of the house is gonna be exposed, is what that amounts to, right?
Yeah.
Yes, roughly. And then we'll be in the grounds or but yes, grade wise, I'm not changing it hardly at all.
Gotcha.
That is correct.
Gotcha. Okay.
And you guys, just to just to add to what Scott said, I mean, I've been doing this for a long time. I mean, the best way to handle this is with a you know, one of those big orange snow fences and a stake about every twelve inches and signs saying, you know, you'll be killed if you go near this tree. You know, it's not a perfect scenario, but I do think, you know, that's gonna help keep everybody cognizant of, hey, this this is a spot we don't wanna, we don't wanna get into. The rear of the house is essentially, you know, vinyl, so I'm not gonna have any heavy equipment back there. You know, humping brick and stuff over there. So I I really don't feel I feel like we can, we can protect this guy and and I think it's worth trying, in my opinion.
All right, do we have any more questions for the petitioner? If not, let's open up the public hearing.
I have a seven forty-two.
And I don't, oh, I think there are some residents in in tennis.
What's your protocol for?
I'm just state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Peter Barr. I live at three two seven seven Eastridge Drive, Dexter, Michigan, Washtenaw County. I was at the previous board meeting and at that time voiced my support of this request. I can't speak to tree. I'm not a tree expert, can't speak to tree survivability or anything of that matter, but I can speak to the character of the cul-de-sac, having lived here for a border, it's about seven years, give or take. And I see one of my other neighbors there too, Tom. And I we discussed when I was here previously that I actually had worked with the petitioner to measure the setbacks of the houses and found meaningful variability anywhere from I think one was more than forty, but most of them were in the forty to thirty-five range. And so the petitioner's request on the setback seems very reasonable and not out of character with the rest of the cul-de-sac. So I support this request and hope the board can move expeditiously to approve it.
Do we have any other public comment?
Yeah, can you guys hear me okay?
Yep.
Tom Arbuthnot, three two seven one Eastridge Drive. And I've been looking out my front window. We've been here about eight years and been looking out my front window every day and I see that tree. Yes, I get chat's comments that, you know, part of this is, you know, is this worth this just from a I don't know, an emotional attachment standpoint to this beautiful tree. And I was interested in all the information, all the work that the Westfalls have done to you know, get the right people put together to legitimately approve from from the professional standpoints that that tree could be reserved for the construction of their home, because obviously all of us as neighbors were concerned someday that if the next door neighbor Kevin never sold that lot that whoever built a house on it might just might have to take that tree down. And that was something all of us neighbors were just dreading that ever happen.
I think the last year was fair enough.
Very, so I'm just here to support all important things.
Mr. Arbuthnot, can you hear us? Sounds like we might have lost him.
Maybe I could summarize Tom's comment with, I love trees and I'm so glad that Scott's gonna save that tree.
Uh, Scott, I assume you don't want to rebut any of their their comments here?
No, I don't.
All right, well, let's uh, let's close the public hearing then if there's no more comments.
Seven forty-five.
All right, let's open up the business session then.
One question I have is for the suggested motion that's on page seventeen. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Yeah, okay, for the suggested motion that's on page seventeen. You know, noting, you know, for each of the six findings, I guess, is it typical that we just work to come up with a yes or no response, or do we actually provide some narrative for each of those?
The you should provide a specific, the facts of the or the basis of your decision, why each criteria is. So for example, a practical difficulty would be preserving a land or an example for the practical difficulty standard, if you were to grant the variance, would be to preserve a landmark tree due to its location on the property.
And you could also take into consideration the pie shape of the property.
Right.
So this is also a new form that we're just taking up. So this will be the first the first motion that we've used with this form.
Okay. So during it can, are we allowed to have a discussion in advance of any motion that would work towards?
Yeah, absolutely. That's what we're supposed to do now during the business session.
Okay, trying to like fill that out to see.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yes, on the practical difficulties, I think we just discussed that the pie shape and then the the location of the landmark tree. I think we can satisfy the the practical difficulty element if you guys are in agreement. Satisfy the, the practical difficulty element if you guys are in agreement.
Mm-hmm. That makes sense to me.
On the substantial justice, if, if other homes in the, in the area have, have similar setbacks, that would be substantial justice in, in my book.
The, um, if we can back up one second there, the practical difficulty thing is, um, the showing of mere inconvenience is insufficient to justify variance. My mind. It is an inconvenience that that tree is in the way of the house. Uh, it is a practical difficulty because it is there. So there's ways to look at that.
Right. I mean, so that's something I thought about the first time I looked at this for the last, for the last meeting was. Somebody could build a different house. That wouldn't. Uh, require any variance and that would save the tree. Um. But it seems like is the question. Are they allowed to build? Are they, um, able to cite a house that uses the maximum allowable, um, lot coverage? I don't, I don't know if that's the question that we're supposed to ask. Can they build any house there? That would not require a variance and also save the tree? Or is it, can they cite a house that takes up the maximum lot coverage without a variance and without harming the tree? Is that Mike, is that the question or either Chris?
Yeah, I thi- I think your real question is, is this a self-created issue? Um, right. So the idea is that we're not allowed to, to grant. Variants as if the, if it's self-created and that's how the practical difficulties come into play. I mean theoretically. Every variance. Could be. Self-created because you just don't do that, the work. Uh, don't do the construction or, or anything. So it's, it's really kind of. Uh, a difficult standard, but a vague standard at the same time.
The, the. In that regard. Yes, a different house would fit on that lot without, for instance, two-story and, uh, Mr. Westfall and, and his wife want to go with a one-story resident and that obviously takes up more. Uh, ground surface all by itself. So. The fact that it's a one-story residence where he has this, a two-story residence has definitely, um, makes a difference here.
On the other hand, I mean, it, it, it is. Uh, self-created in the sense that they want to put a one-story on and save the tree. But they don't have to save the tree. And maybe the city's interest is in having them save that tree. By granting the variance so that they can get what they want without having to take the tree down.
Right now, I'd agree with that.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, is there, is there some very specific guidance that says? Um, whether or not they can cite a different house using the maximum allowable lot coverage? Is that a thing or am I making that up?
There's.
Or is that?
There's not, um, that's, there's, there's not much guidance for it unfortunately, but that's a determination that the board has to make based on. What's been presented. The factors to consider are there's a. Um, a thirty percent permissible lot coverage. Um. Is there enough space for structure to be built with that thirty percent, up to that thirty percent lot coverage and still preserve the tree? It's, uh. You know, if, if there was, it, it's, 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 it takes some evaluation. Um, there's not, um. Well, maybe, uh, uh, when it comes to non-conforming structures, for example, um. There is some degree of deference the board gives to. Design, um, without getting into the, the, the arc, like the depths of the, the. What could be feasible architecturally with the structure or not? That's any help.
So they give some deference to the current, to the design as currently presented, not just theoretically what's possible?
Um, well, the, 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 the key points that consider, I mean. There isn't a lot of space to adjust the footprints. Think that could be inadequate. Um. Finding of, in and of itself. Because the applicant's demonstrated to preserve a tree. However, that's a determination the board would need to make.
Also, I wouldn't say that at this point, we're really, uh, here to get into the details of what he's going to build, uh, and, and all of that. As much as just the plot plan. That the, the sheer outline of the house.
Right, yeah. I mean, I, I can out myself here. I'm generally in favor of approving this variance. I just want to make sure that I'm doing it in a way that's consistent with. The parameters that we're supposed to be following. Um, so I'm trying to understand. The, the boundaries around this practical difficulties thing in terms of. If we can, you know, i- is it okay if, you know? If we, if we set aside the fact that somebody could build a different house there and they wouldn't need this, is that fine that we set that aside?
Well, that goes to that whole self-creation issue. Um, a- and I think like Mike said, I don't think there's any hard and fast rules as to. What. Equates to, to self-created. Um, I mean, I'm sure there's some legal precedent out there, but. Without having reviewed numerous cases on it, it's going to be hard to say exactly what it is.
Mm-hmm.
So we, so we do have some discretion because if it were. If it were truly is, is this. Purely a self-created issue. We would never approve any variance ever.
Mm-hmm.
Does that make sense?
Right, right. Yeah, yeah, it does. So, yeah, I mean, so I guess going back to sort of where we started and I'm comfortable with the practical difficulties as, uh, you had outlined them, Chris, in terms of the shape of the lot and, uh, the tree and the location of the tree. And that we want to retain it.
All right, fine. To move on to the next one for substantial justice, everyone. Yeah.
It's fine with me.
Yes.
So, yeah, I mean, from my perspective, if the other houses have similar setbacks, I think that. Substantial justice is done here for the, uh, the applicant.
Mm-hmm.
I agree.
Yep.
All right, moving on to three, uh, public safety and welfare. I don't think there's any.
Oh, Chris, I think of the, the one, um, red flag I would raise is, uh, it's, uh, staff doesn't believe that the, um, the deviations of the other, uh. Dwellings are, are an adequate basis to grant a variance. Um, however, just be, um, alternatively. Um, it would allow the applicant to preserve the tree, um. As, uh, which is the intent of the tree preservation standards of the ordinance. And it would be the minimally, the, the, the minimal variance necessary to, uh.
To save the tree.
Right.
All right, uh, public safety and welfare. I don't think we have any concerns there.
No, no.
Extraordinary circumstances. Uh, I've always had a question on this one, exactly what we're, what we're looking for here. Um. I, I think that goes back to kind of our practical difficulty issue, doesn't it? And it's, it's what? What are our circumstances? Mike, would you agree?
Um, yes, um. And I, I would say that the first characteristics to identify are the tree's location on the property. And the shape of the property, which was not of the applicant's creation, leaving. Right.
All right, five, no safety hazard or nuisance. Again, same kind of a. Issue, um, as above for the public safety and welfare. Um, six, relationship to adjacent, uh, land uses. Uh. It fits the, the character of the neighborhood. Um, I don't see anything proposed here that, that doesn't fit. Does anyone else have any comments there?
Maybe to the point that I was thinking of, I'm looking at the staff report, I think on page fourteen. Um. Under four, the second paragraph for staff comments, second sentence, it says, however, the need for the variance would be self-created if alternate sighting options are available. For the dwelling and or deck that would allow the applicant to preserve the tree without a variance or with a lesser variance. So maybe this is what I was thinking of. So if we're going conditional on the given. Um, house plan borders, boundaries. I, I don't think that there's a different way they could situate it on the lot. That would save the tree and not require a variance.
You're correct. With the house as, um. As designed, as, as sized, um, I don't think there are alternative sighting options on that site. If the, if the house itself were to be, if the plan were to be modified, then yes, there's alternate sighting up, uh, options, but. The wording is, um. There are no, in my opinion, there are no alternative sighting options available. For this, um, for this house.
Yeah, for the ranch.
Yeah, for a house with this footprint, there you couldn't alternatively. Yeah.
Yeah, that's my point.
This, I, I did a little bit, if I'm remembering, tried to study up on this a little bit before the first meeting. Is it the case that pre, like? Our current ZBAs previous decisions don't necessarily set a precedent? Is that a thing that I may have read?
That is, that's correct.
That's a correct. Okay. I was just curious if there in all the history of your time on ZBAs, on the ZBA here, or I guess any ZBA. If you can recall a time where. You were able to. I don't know. I don't know. I guess is now an appropriate time to say like variance requests that you have denied that are similar to this? Or can you not think, I think somebody said at the last meeting, this was the first time somebody was asking about a tree beca- because of a proximity of a, to the tree. Is there anything similar in your history that's related to this?
In, in mine, no, I, I haven't had a, a request to, to save a tree, but. Um, it, it looks like it's permissible based on the, the information that we have in front of us.
Okay. Um.
Does anyone have any, any other input that they want to? Or any questions?
No.
No.
This house on a, on a different lot would be a slam bang. There you go. But. Given the, given this site with that tree, it's a tough one.
All right. Does someone want to make a motion?
Motion to approve as, uh, outlined by staff.
So generally how it would work is you would, you actually have to basically read the, the suggested motion and then determine whether or not it, it fails or meets and it moves through that whole.
Okay.
I, I know it's a lot of, uh, a lot of words for this one, but that's generally how it's, how it's done.
All right, Catherine, we didn't give you fair warning of that.
Yeah, yeah. That's my fault.
True.
So I'd be just going through the text, uh.
Does anyone want to give it a shot?
Yeah, do you want to follow page seventeen or otherwise I can make a motion?
Page seventeen, yeah.
Yeah, let's, like, because. I actually read it before the meeting and I don't have it printed out in front of me. I'd have to go to my other screen. I'll let somebody else read it.
Okay, I'm, I'm happy to make a motion. I'm guessing it's the same one you would have made. Um, on page seventeen. Based on, uh, the information provided by the applicant and staff at the February sixteenth, twenty twenty-one zoning board of appeals meeting, the board determines. That the variance requested in application AP twenty twenty dot twenty-one dash oh nine ZBA. Thirty-two seventy-four East Ridge Drive submitted by Mr. Scott Westfall for property located at thirty-two seventy-four East Ridge, Dexter, Michigan, four eight one three oh. Friend zero eight dash zero three dash three one dash three one zero dash two and two meets the criteria required for a variance pursuant to section twenty-four point six, uh, friend A. Uh, therefore let it be resolved. The zoning board of appeals grants the following variance, a ten-foot variance from the forty-foot. Minimum front yard setback required by the R one A residential cluster development standard for Westridge cul-de-sac properties as shown in the approved final site plan. Let it further be resolved that minimum front yard setback of thirty feet shall be permitted. In order for the applicant to construct a single-family dwelling and preserve a landmark tree located on the property subject to the following conditions. One. The CWA review letter dated January twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. Two, the site plan must be revised so that the proposed structure does not exceed. The R one A residential cluster development special use rest, Westridge of Dexter lot coverage requirements. Three, in the event that the tree does not survive the completion of construction or if the tree is determined to be in failing health by the city's arborist. Subject to the two-year timeframe and requirements of section six point one six of the city of Dexter zoning ordinance. The applicant shall be required to remove the tree and replace it in compliance with section six point one four D of the city of Dexter zoning ordinance. The performance guarantee shall be required to ensure the applicant replaces the tree pursuant to the requirements of section six point one six of the city of Dexter zoning ordinance. The determination was made based on the following findings for section twenty-four point oh six A of the city of Dexter zoning ordinance. Um, do I need to go ahead and fill all those into?
Just as, uh, as succinct as you, you, you like the findings of fact.
I have a question in that regard, if I might interject. What happens if you, all the way up there was to approve, to approve, uh, okay, and then down here you say it doesn't meet on any of those. Um, specific items. For instance, the practical difficulty thing. If you said no and then yes on everything else, is it still okay? I mean, what's the purpose of the?
Um, whoever's, whoever's making the motion should, should provide, uh, cite some fact for each of the six criteria. Uh, that each standard is met. Um, if the motion were to deny, then, um. Believe ideally should also walk through it. Um, but again, if, if one of the six standards aren't met, then the, the variance should not be granted.
I see.
Uh, thanks for clarifying. Uh, so the standard for practical difficulties. So, yeah, so this is all part of my motion that the standard of practical difficulties is met due to the shape of the lot and the. Location of the tree, that it's a landmark tree, um. Substantial justice, um. I believe it's also related to the location of the tree. I'm happy to use help on that if not. Uh. No concerns. Uh, so the substantial justice, the standard is met. The standard for public safety and welfare is met. There were no concerns. About the impacts there. Um, the standard for extraordinary circumstances is met also because of the. Location of the tree. I think that it's a landmark tree, um. That there were no alternative, um. Citing options for the plan as presented. Um, that would preserve the tree without a variance. The standard for the safe, uh, no safety hazard or nuisance was met. We had no concerns there. And the standard for relationship to adjacent land uses was met. Given that it's consistent with the other, um, land uses on that cul-de-sac. I think that concludes my motion.
All right, I'll second.
I, I do have one correction. Um, the number one item there, the, um. Carlisle Wortman review letter, we received a revised one today and that's probably the one that ought to be included. February sixteen.
I'm happy to accept a friendly amendment to my motion if that's okay with you and if Chris wants to second that.
Yeah, I'll second as amended.
And then Mike, do we do a roll call or do I do the roll call?
Um, I can do the roll if there's no further discussion. Griffin?
Doesn't look like.
Sorry.
I was gonna say, it doesn't look like we have any further discussion.
Griffin?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Hill?
No.
Waller.
Yes.
The. Uh, motion carries. And the, uh, the variance is approved, uh, as moved.
All right. Does anyone want to, uh, make a motion to, uh, adjourn?
Move.
All right. And well, thank you very much, everyone. That concludes the, uh, meeting for the evening and, uh, Mr. Westfall will, uh, be in touch.
Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Westfall. Uh, as a person who's just built a house within the last five years in Dexter. Uh, I'd be happy to talk to you about it, not in official capacity, but as, uh. You know, to, uh, advise or commiserate or whatever.
Catherine, I will gladly accept all the help I can get and that goes for prayers too.
Yeah, and I think we went to high school together.
Really?
Were you in Chelsea, at Chelsea High School in nineteen eighty-five?
No, I was not actually.
Okay, there wasn't Scott Westfall there with me.
Oh, really? No kidding?
Yeah.
All right. Well, thanks again, everyone. Uh. Have a good night.
Have a good night everyone. Have a good night, everyone.
Bye. Bye.